Now recording.
That is off, we'll be in.
We are recording.
Okay, good. Can we have your attention? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start the board meeting. It is, I believe, two minutes after six oh one. So, uh, the monthly meeting of the Board of the San Carlos Estates Water Control District is called to order uh, on February twentieth, twenty twenty-three if one is present. Chairman Jim Bradford, Vice Chair Jennifer Fanazzo, Supervisor John Solucci, Secretary of State Chris Lawson, Attorney Richard Pringle, and Engineer Ron Ednfield. And we're glad to have you this evening. A moment ago, I counted the number of people. It looks like it's gone by a couple since then. So it looks like if somebody wants to give me a count, about sixteen. While we're on the introductions here, uh, we do have the, uh, Benita Springs Councilwoman Jamie Bogaz. Anybody who doesn't know her?
Which is?
We want to thank you for attending. The, the board meeting packets have all been distributed. Does everybody have those?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Ednfield. Yes, sir. Your report.
Busy, huh? We have, uh, Dave, we have fourteen.
We don't have a microphone, so we need to speak up so everybody can hear. Looks like we've got a really long table tonight.
We have, uh, fourteen open applications that are currently under review for right-of-way use permits. Have, uh, two that were submitted, two that are new to us, uh, since the last board meeting. We have finalized four during that period. And we've conducted twenty-seven inspections, or inspections of twenty-seven different lots during that period. We also participated in the statewide MS four, this municipal, municipal separate storm sewer system, which we are co-permittees with Lee County. A brief summary of that meeting is they're rewriting the format of their report. There will be some new requirements in that report and other elements primarily will be just reorganized within that report. So, um, we took notes of that. And, uh, we'll be transitioning from Morris to Pew to R M E C through the course of the year for next year's report as a co-permittee with Lee County. Had the opportunity to host the secretary at our offices to meet with our permit coordinator, Maria Selsey. Think it was a good meeting. Wanted them two to get together since to make sure that we're getting to, uh, Chris exactly what she needs in the format that she needs it in, so. Big progress in that area. We had, had had three meetings with, uh, the program manager from FEMA. He and, uh, Peter and I have met together, uh, at least three times since the last meeting. As well as numerous emails and phone conversations. We should be ready to submit the first two of the projects, uh, by week's end. Get those in and under review. The, uh, program manager, uh, will give it a final review. And then it will be shipped off to, uh, Washington for review. Where the, uh, actual per application reviewers will look at it. I'm sure we'll get it, uh, at least one round of comments back. And, uh, of course, we'll be properly responding to those with Peter in the lead on that. And generally, that's the conclusion of our report.
We were also told by FEMA that we had in the first application to FEMA. So, we were, we were proactive in getting our site done. Uh, this is also going to be done in stages. And the monies that we receive, there are no guarantees on anything. We have to do the work. We have to submit the bills. And then we get paid hopefully at some future date. We don't know when that will be. For the gate project was on that list. And the gates are now up and operating. For those of you who have passed through them recently, you'll note that they have been lighted. Mike Bradford has been with us there. He's sitting right over there. He's been spearheading that project and bringing it, bringing it to the conclusion that it has been. If you've got anything you'd like to say about it, this is your moment in time.
Oh, no, other than anybody with any, uh, clicker issues, please just, uh, at this point, let me know. The vast majority of them are working. And so, um, if someone had a clicker with a dead battery for a while or something, it might have gotten out of, uh, out of, uh, you know, we need to reset it. But other than that, I think we're all good. Yeah, it seems to be working as it should.
I'm not gonna, did you have something to add?
I was gonna say, we did put on the website in the latest happenings tab, um, at Mike's suggestion, for people that were having issues with the clickers to, to replace their batteries and then contact us if they continue to have problems.
Okay, thank you very much. If you all have noted, there's most of the signage in our subdivision has also been replaced. Any damaged signs, that means bent metal bolts that have been compromised from the winds of the storm have all been replaced. And if there's any left, there's only a few of them. That is part of the FEMA project. Again, we'll be looking down the road as other cities, uh, we're not a city, but other cities have participated in sending in theirs in the same aspects. So, we've been replacing all the signs in the subdivision and getting, hopefully we'll get reimbursed for that. We've continued to work on the projects surrounding us, which they will be ongoing for the next year probably. We're trying to look at getting our surrounding communities to participate in the, uh, canal system around our subdivision. It's all used by them, which includes Astero, the state of Florida, Lee County, City of Benita Springs, and some private subdivisions. And hopefully that if we can get the participation, it'll take some of the burden off the taxpayers in this subdivision for having to do a hundred percent of that. As we've seen, uh, we're looking also at FEMA, which that is part of the program now, to see how much of, they have been out and inspected our, well, not actually, the FEMA inspectors haven't been out, but our project manager has been out and looked at the reservoirs that we have as the water's beginning to go down. And they're looking at, uh, participating in what they call a mitigation project, which if that, if that comes to be, then they'll pay for the cleaning of the canal system one time all the way around the subdivision, putting us in a good spot probably the next ten years. It's been building up now for a long time. And this hurricane has dumped a lot of garbage and trash into it. We did, we did a cleaning project. Unfortunately, that had to be done at a time when the water was, when the canals were full of water. Uh, we literally had people in the canal system walking, trying to find everything they could. But you guys know how that is. There's, there's only so much they could do if they can't see it. So, that's the other project. Um, trying to cover everything here, but, uh...
On, on that issue on the canal cleanout, the FEMA project manager shared with us this past meeting, which was last Wednesday, that we have until March twenty-ninth, if there's any additional debris.
But that's at the seventy-five percent?
That's at the seventy-five percent. But we have an opportunity to go in and, I'd like the board's direction on that is to, to go in and do a, an assessment and see whether it's extensive enough to warrant engaging the contractor to go in and get that stuff, which we couldn't see, uh, prior to the water receding.
Okay.
It could, Mike, we've gotten reports of extensive debris. I've been around a perimeter canal, not in several weeks.
Well, you and I were out there a week ago looking at part of it, so.
And there are a few spots, I think, but I don't know the, don't know whether or not it's enough to warrant, uh, engaging someone to come in and remove it. We haven't heard any reports of anything.
Well, I will say this today, I went around with Michael helping with the gates and went down every part of the perimeter roads in the entire community. And there's at least one pine tree that's fallen over. Was it not cleaned up during the cleanup? Has it fallen since then? I don't know. But there's one eight-inch diameter tree that's always, like you could walk across the, the swell of the canal.
There weren't any as of the end of our deadline to get all the work done.
Okay, well, those ones down.
It might be worth, we've taken the time to ride around, take a look, identify where that is. And if there are any other spots where we have significant debris, then maybe get someone out there to get that out of there. And that can still be added to that project.
The understanding of the cleanout, if they, if we go into the mitigation side of it, were they gonna cover a hundred percent of that cleanout and the culvert that they were talking about? Or is that in the seventy-five percent? I, I'm trying, I, I thought that that, because we went into a different phase, was gonna be covered a hundred percent. Therefore, if we go back now and clean out, um, stuff that's at seventy-five percent of which we have to cover twenty-five percent of. I think we need to call Dale and find out what the answer to that is and decide whether we move forward.
We'll be meeting on Wednesday again. And, uh, I would like, uh, we'll get clarification from him on that. But it was my understanding that any money, any money spent to remove additional debris would go into the seventy-five, twenty-five project.
Okay.
Which they had extended until March twenty-ninth.
Well, it's sort of confusing with him because when we talked to him about it, on one hand, he says, we're gonna go into phase two or phase three. And then he says this twenty-five, seventy-five percent participation program of it. And every time we miss deadline dates, we reduce the amount we can get back. So, we have to make sure that we're not missing these things. But in the way they did this program, we can't see the bottom of the canals till the water goes down. And that was past their deadline dates. So, yes, sir.
Question for the engineer. You were talking about you're trying to coordinate with the communities around us. We've got that Benita Springs Golf Course to develop and they're gonna be dumping water.
That's, that's also being...
Is that gonna affect our flow, outflow?
They, they, there's gonna be a participation there also, um, with, if I'm correct, a holding pond and a drainage pipe, which is supposed to flow water two directions. That is supposed to relieve some of our system into a, a pond they're building. Do we see, the engineer is working with them on that, working with the people from the City of Benita Springs on that. Right now, it's all in the drawing board.
Ron? You're gonna speak to that?
You may.
Okay. I didn't present this as part of my regular report because I thought we'd pick it up later, but since we're here, let's go with it. I met with Director of Public Works Assistant City Manager Matt Feeney, early last week. They have a project that's a carryover from Irma. It's had a H M G P Hazard Mitigation Project that during Irma, the properties basically to the east of the district had flooding problems. They, so, they had an opportunity to put a project on the books. They kind of spitball, stuck their thumb out there and said, well, let's fix all this over here. Never dreaming that it would be picked up for funding. Well, it did. Got picked up for funding. So, they undertook a, an effort for design and modeling of a stormwater project that essentially will use up in excess of fifty percent of the real estate of the old golf course. Baron Collier has purchased that. They're purchasing it back from Baron Collier and are turning it into this flood mitigation project. All of the discharge from that area will come out south of the Stillwell here. South of where the Moriah and Stillwell canals come together. So, it will not be discharging through the district, although it will be discharging downstream of the district. One of the criteria that FEMA has is that your project can't result in a, in an impact to adjacent properties. And not to get too deep into the woods, but the, the modeling that they did without, what I'm gonna mention next, the pond that Jim mentioned, without that, they couldn't meet that criteria. They had an adverse impact. So, they've come back. And if you're familiar, there's a vacant parcel just on the east side of the Stillwell Canal, just north of the Stillwell Gate. Uh, I think there may have been a trailer or a single family in the southwest corner.
That vacant property in there is what we're referring to.
Their, their engineers and their modelers, uh, propose to put in a pond on the, the entirety of that property. Uh, there'll be no discharge from the lands east of the canal into that pond. The only connection, the only connection that pond will have will be un, uh, into the Stillwell Canal. So, as the water levels in the Stillwell Canal fill up, so will that pond. And it'll all come up and down together. And it's, in essence, it becomes a, a shock absorber for our system. And provide, it, it actually provides additional storage to the district's system. But more importantly, to the city and their project, it makes their numbers work. It, it makes everything work so they do not have an adverse impact on, um, adjoining properties. And we looked at it very preliminarily. I've had some limited conversations and, uh, with others about it. My thought going forward was to ask the board to authorize, Mr. Pringle and I, to schedule a meeting with the city, uh, with Mr. Feeney and with the city attorney. And to sit down and let's talk about the possibility, the probability of, uh, the district being able to support that. I mean, it is your canal. They have to have your permission to connect to it. But again, there are a lot of details that need to be worked through. And, uh, so we'd like to permit, support the board to start that conversation.
I make the motion that we'll, um, to do that. I know we're in the chair's report right, or in the, uh, actually still in the engineer's report.
Yes, sir.
But, and, and you want me to wait on that motion?
Well, we don't even need a motion, Mr. Chairman. If, if the board, unless the board objects, we will, uh, proceed to have that conversation. And it may not even occur before the next board meeting.
Sure.
This is oftentimes a process, as we know from past interactions with the city. In an effort to, in an effort to, um, get an, an agreement and interlocal agreement in place, sometimes it takes a while for all the parts to come together.
Okay, so, one of the things that we are trying to do with current issues around the subdivision at the time is interaction with the surrounding communities. And I, I, I noted on that a minute ago. And that's what we're trying to make sure of, so that if this does happen, it won't become a burden or a commitment to this community to have to pay for things in later years when other boards are sitting in these positions. That it is taken care of and you'll know exactly how it works. For the purpose of Chairman Bogaz, would you mind just giving her a little background on the other systems you've been in charge of, Fort Myers Beach, the other water districts, so she knows a little bit about your background? Because this, I think this is, she's part of the city. And knowing that, uh, when, when you oversee these projects, if you don't want...
Tell her how much experience I have with gravity working.
Just pat yourself on the back.
That's probably the thing I do, do the poor asleep. I practiced, uh, engineering in Southwest Florida, going on forty years, thirty-five years. Came here in the mid-eighties, working for South Florida Water Management District. Went into private practice in the early nineties and have been there ever since. The, uh, ninety through ninety-nine, worked for a small firm that included myself and two or three others. Uh, went with a larger national firm from ninety-nine to two thousand and eleven. As head of water resources, left there in two thousand and eleven, went back to working for myself, uh, myself. And we're now a grand total of six of us. So, we're a very small firm. We, uh, don't do land development, i.e. the Wilson Millers and the Magnoli Barbers. We don't do large developments. We do, uh, very small projects for very select clients. Have been the de facto city engineer for City of Fort Myers for a period of time. We did the Billy Creek Filter Marsh. We did, uh, the culinary plants for the Fort Myers and Country Club Conversion. We did the Ford Street Treatment System, uh, early on, again, concept plans. Uh, we constructed the first filter marsh in Lee County with ten mile canal flowway. And, uh, did that back when I had dark hair, I believe. It was a long time ago. But, uh, it, uh, functioned also as the, uh, city engineer to, working for Jack Green and Kathy Lewis, uh, town of Fort Myers Beach for a number of years. And, uh, functioned as district engineer for Lobel Private Drainage District for fifteen years. So, been around, done a lot of work to the bottom of the hill. And, uh, it still amazes me that some people try to get it to the top of the hill. It just doesn't work well that way. So, uh, we believe very much in using natural systems to let them do their thing. Uh, they're very effective and efficient at it. And so, we try to work that into every project we can, so. And the fact that I know Matt Feeney, please don't hold that against him.
Okay, that, that seems like I've combined the chair's report and the engineer's report. And you usually give my recall.
Okay, just to add to this, so, um, I added, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, I appreciate the quotes in the article. I don't know if everybody saw this, the W G C U article on, um, you know, the website, will more Houston residents need more stormwater? Run off to one mini spring than, Mr. Bradford, you're quoted extensively, which is great.
Well, I hope it was good. I, I haven't read it yet. And, and what, as reporter, as reporters go, until you read it, you don't know what's coming out.
So, I will provide this. I would suggest putting this in the minutes because I think there's good energy behind it. So, I think you're addressing all the right things around, I guess, is the capability, capacity of our system and how it relates to outside. I think that's kind of what we're getting at. So, I think, but it's two things. It's also, the other thing is the money, right? So, you addressed the money that we are paying.
Correct.
To maintain a system for others that are not paying. And, you know, we have talked about this for a long time now and it sounds like maybe it's time to address it. And so, part of it has been, most of it's beneath the springs communities outside San Carlos Estates that are using. So, so again, you, you talk about a lot of interaction with, um, and, and negotiation with those outside in the city. I guess it was, I, I appreciate that and applaud it. You haven't, there isn't like quoting that I won't read at all, it's good.
I'll, I'll, I'm gonna read that tonight, yeah. But nonetheless, uh, as far as, uh, Council Bogaz goes, you know, this, this is something that the board should have been doing a long time ago. And it's only that, we were a very, nineteen fifty-six, we were a very small, just beginning community here. As Benita Springs had a narrow two-lane road going through it. And it was a country hip town and nobody ever thought it would become what it is today. And it's only been in the past twenty-five years, thirty years, that it has grown in the magnitude that it has, as our subdivision is. But the growth around us is competing with us also. And the blacktop, the roofs, the big garages, the driveways, the asphalt, they're not, they're not providing for, for the, for the protection of the water system anymore. They're, and I'm not saying they're not providing for it. It's just that it used to drain into the ground and it wasn't a big issue. Today, it's gotta be put into holding ponds, filtering ponds, et cetera, et cetera, to be able to be, and be retained on the properties it's coming from. And this is, we're all in the same boat. Your kids are gonna be, uh, sharing in this. And hopefully, if we do the right thing today, that down the road, we will have done our job right. And that, it's not about one of us, it's about all of us. And so, anyway, yes, sir.
All right, just two quick things, just that. So, a critical perspective, from what I can tell, I, I moved here in twenty eighteen, so you guys all know more than I do. But Benita Springs, from what I can tell, was incorporated in nineteen ninety-nine, which is thirty years after San Carlos Estates. So, you know, it's an interesting perspective to take. So, lots of, lots of things have changed.
They're not gonna let us leave for that reason.
So, I mean, the other thing is the water control plan, as listed on the website, is eighteen years old. And I'm wondering if this would at least drive an update to that and...
Okay.
It does seem a little vague when you're looking at that one.
Yeah, we're having a little trouble hearing you down here, I'm sorry.
So, just let's say a lot when it's eighteen years old. And now with all this being negotiated, then maybe it's time to consider updating that to incorporate the integration of the community.
Okay.
Update the website, just what you're saying.
Thank you very much. And we, we will try to take care of that.
Actually, we talked about that at the last meeting.
We have talked about updates of water control. It just seems like there's a lot going on and there's a handful of us to do it. We, we do ask for anybody who wants to volunteer to help us with any of these programs, projects, et cetera, jump right in. Just throw your hand in, hat in the rain and we will certainly use you to do that.
Jim, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Essentially, every year, the water, uh, the water management plan gets updated via the MS four. They're going through, uh, your report every year to the state about the status of your stormwater system, uh, which is the water control plant. You provide them with updates and accomplishments relative to the milestones for the year that you're in that cycle of. The water quality monitoring that was done and reporting that was done to meet the water quality standards. So, even though the, the, the last published document may be two thousand and five or two thousand and eight
I think it was in nine.
Nine, uh, from Morris to Pew. That would really have been for the district's purposes. But then subsequent to that, every year, when you go through the MS four cycle, you go to year one through five, and then you start back over one through five. And you have certain milestones that you have to accomplish. But throughout that process, you're updating your stormwater plan, making sure you're meeting the water quality standards, water quantity standards and so forth. So, that may be the last one that was published by Morris and Pew. But again, de facto, you've been updating it every year through the MS four report.
You were gonna, you were gonna check with them to see for, find a copy of the twenty-fourteen because we did not have a copy of the twenty-fourteen that we were able to find. And I think, David, we, I think I updated the website with the twenty-nine, the two thousand and nine. But I'd have to go back and re-verify that because we, we were finding some and...
So, that's still fourteen years old, but the link that says...
Yeah, but the fourteen, yeah, the fourteen was the one that I saw a record somewhere, mention of it. And Ron was gonna check with Morris to Pew for a copy of it. But we're at the time from that, twenty twenty-four is next year to do, produce a new one, which is our five, it's our fifth year cycle, correct?
So, I can just, so I'm, when I read, definitely twenty-eight, it suggests, I might be wrong reading it, but it suggests that there are other things that we need other than that report that Mr. Ednfield talks on. It would just be nice to see that I was complying with twenty-eight on the documents.
Okay, we, we will work on that. And thank you for bringing it up. I do want to apologize, sir, but when we first came over to this building, we had had microphones set up. And then, then the crowd got a little small and I neglected to continue to do that. At the next meeting, we will make sure that we're back using microphones again so everybody can hear as well as, yeah, possible. And if there's, so, I apologize for that. We will get back on to that. And, uh, I just got one last thing on my report that I want to address. And as we are working with FEMA, uh, we have talked to FEMA and it comes under the, is it the mitigation? Of things that are affected... Of things that are affected by other areas and other communities and growth. And under those ways, and I don't know whether that's the third phase or the second phase, we get into the ditches and the culverts?
Did you have, FEMA has a series of different category.
We don't need to get into it in real depth. I just wanted to brief them on what we were working on and what that, what that is going to allow for. If they fund it, is that all of the ditch systems in our community that were built when the roads were built will get cleaned out and be lowered below the, the, this, the culvert pipes? And the culvert pipes will be cleaned out. And in that, it's because of all of the adverse effect we're having from the surrounding communities, we can qualify for that. We haven't actually got it yet. But we also have a program going on right now where we have to start cleaning the culvert pipes again and cleaning out some of the ditch systems. And we're, we're on the process of putting out bids for that at this time. And we're going to select as many roads as we can do as per the money we have. So with that being said, I've concluded my chair's report and.
Can I put the chair on top?
One last.
Okay.
The ice cream.
As I mentioned, without again, getting too deep, there are a number of categories that FEMA qualifies all of their various projects in. And I think we have six or seven different projects.
That we're working on.
That are broken down by various categories, road bridges, culverts, clean debris, just like Jim was saying. The categories A and B, which are the debris cleanup and protective measures, which we've taken, those are our first cleanup of the canal and then at a hundred percent and seventy-five percent. All the other categories require a site inspection by a FEMA inspector. We're currently scheduling those now. We've asked Dale to schedule a half dozen different project elements to be reviewed by their site inspector. So we're working to get that on their schedule so we can get them here as soon as we can. So just kind of add that to your, your report.
Thank you very much.
Because you don't know how long it's gonna take them to get scheduled to get here, so.
Yeah, this is, this is like I said earlier, this is a year-long project, possibly two years, before we know exactly and come to conclusions to this stuff. So don't expect, we also have some projects put in place for replacing asphalt out here through the FEMA program. We won't get it all, but we'll get, we might get part of it. So we're working on that also. So we've got a lot going on with them. We've had a lot of meetings with them and a lot of time spent.
Before we leave, Ron, did, back to the canal cleanup, did the ditch, did you ever inspect the ditch going under the Stillwell? Stillwell, no, not Stillwell, but Strike Lane?
Yes.
At the railway track? So is that, is that cleared out?
We've got that scheduled to, as one of our site inspections. To get refunded, to get reimbursed for it, we're gonna need the FEMA inspector to, to observe that.
Okay, I thought that was part of the rashers job.
It, the culverts, that culvert somehow didn't get, wasn't part of it. It was all of the other culverts that cross from north to strike to south.
It was actually an inviting line.
And apparently it got overlooked. And in any event, had, had we cleaned it out, we might not have gotten reimbursed for it. So I was by there earlier this week. It is flowing, it's not flowing well, but it is flowing. So that shows me that we are passing water from north to south. So I don't see that as being an imminent threat, particularly as dry as it's been up late. So if we can get that scheduled in the very near future to have the FEMA investigator come and look at that, then we can fairly well guarantee we'll get reimbursed for it.
And, and that is on the project list for being replaced with an equal-sized culvert pipe to those coming under Livingston and the back roads so that it won't be a, a blockage at the railroad track. It'll flow equally all the way around our system and over the weirths and that. So hopefully, we'll get that done also. I have a question with Councilwoman Bogues. What, what is your key objective to learn from SKU? I know you're a resident here, but as a representative of Esbonita Springs, what do you hope to see Esbonita Springs gain from SKU and vice versa? Is there a plan at all in Esbonita?
Are we just talking about the water drainage?
Yes.
From the new subdivisions and everything?
I mean, because if you really think about, if you really think about us, we're like a toll booth. We're collecting the toll for a lot of, lot of highways coming in and out of here.
There is, in order for it to drain and run out, they are gonna have to flood into a section of ours. From what I've heard and seen, it is going to help our community. And they're willing to work with us and talk to us, as Mac has spoken to him. But I think we would benefit from the drainage portion of the very south end of that area.
Good, okay, thank you. Chris.
All right.
That's true.
I'm gonna focus, like we did last time, on the variance report, which is next to the last of the February twenty-eighth. And I stole yours, so you can't share.
Oh, your share.
Because I don't know what happened to my packet.
I'm glad I can.
So we received, we have received so far in CIP tax revenues, four hundred and eighty thousand and ten dollars, which is about eighty-five percent of the revenue that we budgeted for. We're short about eighty-two thousand. We did make our first installment for this year of our note on February first. So the next note payment will be August first. And we have plenty of money in the checking account, even if that ten percent does not come in to make that loan payment. However, if we don't get it, that remaining eighty-two thousand, we will be short to make our principal pay down as budgeted. For the general maintenance, we have received five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty dollars, which is ninety-four percent of the tax revenue that we've anticipated. We're short about thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. What's interesting is last year, the CIP and the general maintenance, they pretty much tracked percentage-wise equally. And I'm seeing a variance between the two this year, so I don't know why that is. So that'll be interesting to see. I don't know if maybe the installment payments are being credited first to general maintenance and then to the CIP. That's one logical thing I came up with. But I really don't know why there's that variance. So I, I wanted to bring that up as being something that I found to be a little bit different from last year. Otherwise, we did get the Brooks twenty thousand dollars in this month. So we are just a little shy or below for the other income, which is really all we have budgeted there of twenty-five seventy, was our projection of gate remotes. We have been having a bit of a sale here recently on the remote, so that number should come up. And the used connection permits, we are also down this year, as, which is not unsurprising, given the interest rate market. And so that tells us that the building is slowing down a little bit from, from the past. We have only received three thousand and fifty dollars of driveway permits. And so that's about nineteen percent down of our projections. And again, we halved the projection this year from last year, so we were anticipating a slowdown. So that's the income revenue side of it. We are looking good. As far as the expenses, we are paying, as of this month, the auditor bill in full. The big deviations, or deviations, I should say, are in drainage. We only have spent two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars on drainage, which primarily has been for the fencing repairs, which is about ninety-three, we're ninety-three percent off on an annualized basis. And that's mostly because we haven't done any of the anticipated and the annual project yet. By now, we would have done the canal cleaning and the tree trimming along the canal and perimeter roads. That has not been done, so that bill is not in that number. So that's why that number's off. The engineer bill is one percent off, so we're fine with that in terms of our budget. And these numbers are also reflecting the journal entries from the audit. So if you see, if you're looking and you go back to January's numbers from the last month and for this month, and you see some differing numbers, that's because of the journal entries, which you have a copy of in the letters that came from the auditor. And just for the audience's purposes, the journal entries are to adjust the budget for bills that were paid either before the end of the fiscal year or after the end of the fiscal year, for the prior fiscal year or the upcoming fiscal year. So it's a truing up of the two, two years. So other than the gate, it also is a little bit low. And our insurance is fine. Our legal bills are low from the budget on an annualized basis. And our road budget is also low. Again, that's because we have not done any of the anticipated road projects, of which there were two this year, actually three. One was the road signage, which thank you Hurricane Ian for paying for, but hopefully. The second was twenty-five thousand for general road repairs along the, the community. And then the perimeter road cleanup project, which has been under discussion in past meetings. And we've not made any, we've not done anything there. So that is why the roads budget is so much out of whack, according to the, the budget. And the swale mowing is just a little bit. And that's because we did not do the increase that was projected at, in October. So as far as our budget, we have spent four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars, which includes two hundred and eighteen thousand of the principal payments and the interest payments. And then for Hurricane Ian, we have spent a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars for total expenditures of six hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars thus far this year. We had allocated, had taken two hundred thousand from our Florida Prime account budget, which was unassigned dollars for our reserves. We had moved two hundred thousand dollars over there for Hurricane Ian expenses. We have spent so far a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars of that. So we still have fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars remaining, although we don't have some of the legal expenses that are attributable to the storm built into that number yet. So like, for now, the budget's looking very well.
Okay, and just like, if you don't, can I interrupt you for a moment? Okay, we do have a few things, when you mentioned the fence, that should go into the Hurricane.
That is.
Ian account.
Yep, that is.
I just wanted the people who are here to know that some of these things we are talking about, some of the attorney's fees, some of the engineer's fees are all going to be in the project from the Hurricane Ian. So we're, we probably should come out looking pretty good this year due to that.
Yes, and depending on whether we get these other road projects, these other projects done. Which I was going to suggest that because we did have them in the budget as a project, that we might make them committed funds at the, at the, by the end of the year if we don't use some of it.
Well, the engineer is currently getting bids on some of the ditch cleaning, the culvert cleaning. And we're gonna see how far the money will go to be able to handle those.
Yeah.
We need to get those projects done before the drainage is.
So as far as the loan note, just in case anybody's interested, I did get a new amortization schedule. Our current balance on the loan is six hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. We do have an August one payment of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars, which will bring it down to three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven. If we are able to, as projected in our budget, do additional pay down of a hundred thousand, that will enable us to pay the loan off in, I hope, February of two thousand and twenty-four, instead of August of two thousand and twenty-five. And the assessment for the CIP Phase One will be considerably less on your tax bill for next year. Because we'll be, I don't want to say fifty percent, but we'll be between fifty and sixty percent of what it has been for the past ten years practically.
Okay.
Because I've kind of been working on that. Any questions?
Are you using some of that maintenance piece that you're collecting to pay that down? I noticed why in three years it's gone up forty-six percent.
No, no, we, we have, the CIP assessment has not changed since two thousand and fourteen or fifteen.
Are we in some kind of financial trouble to raise it that much in two years, fifty-six percent?
Um, the reason it went up, they didn't change the, the assessment for like four years. They stayed, it kept, stayed the same for four years. And then in twenty-one, it, it took a leap from three twenty-one to four fifty-five. This year, we specifically raised it from five forty, we looked at that and raised it to five forty-seven per acre because we were going to do these additional projects. We had a fifty thousand dollar drainage project that you were, were gonna work on. There was a twenty-five thousand dollar roadway project that was established, was gonna be doing some roadway repairs. There was eighteen thousand budgeted for the perimeter roads. There was six thousand dollars budgeted for signage replacement. And then there was the manager salary increase. So there was a number of reasons why that budget went up so much this year because they were going to, you know, right there, you've got fifty, seventy-five thousand, eighty-one, almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of projects that they were gonna do that had not been done in prior years.
And Hurricane Ian has delayed some of that and helped with some of that. So it won't change the fact that next year, it'll also be on the agenda for being done and finished. And there'll be ongoing things, so.
I'm already working on the budget for discussions in a few months' period. And looking at that, I was gonna ask the board in a later part of our meeting, you know, what projects they wanted to anticipate into the next budget. But I don't, I, I don't see us having to be at the five forty-seven level that we were this year, unless the board decides that they want to keep it at that level. I think we can actually reduce it a little bit, but I don't know. We're working on it.
Okay. You done?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. Do we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Uh-uh.
Okay, then we're good.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Attorney's report, you got five minutes.
I can do it in less than that. The policy, the policy manual has been completed and Supervisor Salucci has approved the manual. And I will be putting it on the website this week.
Okay.
I have the travel reimbursement policy resolution for the board to consider this evening. And I have the funds assignment policy for the board to consider this evening. I think that was about thirty-six seconds. More.
You're not gonna tell me you're done?
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. I'm done.
You should go to Daytona next year. Yes, sir.
So the last one was a reference to some litigation around eight nine nine one. Can you just give a report of litigation that the district is engaged in and?
I think with litigation or anything with the attorney at this point in time, until he's resolved these issues with whoever, I don't think that we're going to be discussing this case.
I was asking what.
We push it off on the agenda.
So.
Do you want me to respond at all? I have a simple.
You can say what you think you can say, but.
Yes, sir. The simple response is, Mr. Nagy, there is no pending litigation related to any matters.
Okay, last week you used the word litigation, so it's a little confusing. But I'll take your answer.
I don't remember.
I'm normally pretty careful. If I was not careful, I apologize, but there is no pending litigation.
Why wouldn't we even talk about it? I saw it myself, I'm like, well, what's that about? Everyone's dancing around, I guess we all can talk about it though.
Well, I'll try to have another brief answer. Typically with litigation, the lawyers don't talk about pending litigation.
But are they after us or we are after them?
And or possible settlement negotiations. There have been discussions between us and the landowner at eighty-nine ninety-one Strike Lane for a number of months related to the use of the district's right-of-way easement. And so that's just ongoing. That would actually be a more accurate description than. That would actually be a more accurate description than to refer to it as litigation.
Okay, fair.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so just again, so we all have the same expectations here. So your criteria for informing the public and the landowners is just around attorney plan privilege, or are you setting explicit things in, in their Florida law statutes that say you don't have to tell us, or how does, I'm just trying to figure out what we're expecting here in terms of updating risk and benefit to the, to the cost of the attorney?
Can I answer that question?
You may. Please do.
I mean, the work can answer too, that's all. That'd be good.
Under your audit requirements, I am required to disclose certain, uh, risks, potential liabilities and disputes, uh, threatened litigation or pending litigation. Normally, that is the place where you will see a description in that audit letter. Uh, so that might be a good document to look at. Uh, I am soon going to be completing the audit letter, um, that I will be presenting to the auditor and to the board, so the board will have a copy of that as well. Uh, that might be a good place to look. With regard to matters that are of controversy, but not at a point where an agreement has to be considered or approved by the board, um, oftentimes, there will not be a discussion of those, um, by me, except at a very limited capacity to mention that there might be of some controversy. So except for the audit letter, that's a document where I am required to describe known or anticipated, um, controversies. Except for that, um, I will tell you that it is my general practice to not have, um, a lot of discussion, so as not to, and especially of any details of any settlement discussions, um, so as not to divulge anything that's confidential. I just try to be careful not to do that.
Okay, so that all makes sense, but so, your job is to do, our job, ours, to understand as much as we can, and ask, we can ask questions, and my understanding is that you need to kind of have a statute that says we can't have that information. So to the, as much as you could respond with that authority to divulge the information to the public, that would greatly appreciate.
Yes, sir. Chef, I might say one more thing, for sure. What, what the law says is, if there's a public record, then I have to disclose the public record if a public records request is asked, is made. There is a considerable amount of information that does not constitute a public record. A public record, the definition of a public record primarily relates to the form of the information. And so it does not relate to, specifically to topics of information, but rather the form of the information. So if there is something that is in the form of a public record of the district that someone would like to see, then they can make a public records request. And to the extent we have a public record that satisfies the public records request, then we can provide that information. But I regularly, uh, no, let me back off from that regularly. I sometimes receive requests in the form of questions that are not asking for public records, but rather are asking me to answer questions that I just, I don't have to answer legally. And typically, it's not in the best interest of the district for me to answer, um, on the public record. So if you ask me a question that is related to a topic that I believe it is best for me to not discuss in a public meeting, chances are I won't discuss it. Unless it's a public record, and if it's a public record, then I'll be glad to provide it for you.
So if I ask in the public, is that a public record?
No, sir. You can ask me a lot of questions in the public rec, uh, in a public meeting, and, uh, that does not constitute them being a public record, my answer being a public record.
If I'm correct, that doesn't actually apply until such time as a person has, any person that's doing anything for the board has completed that task, put the paperwork into the board, and it's on record by the secretary. Am I correct there? It's not a public record until it has been finished.
There are some documents that even though they have not been, um, final, finally turned in and approved by the board, they, there may still be some public record element to them. And so it is important, whenever a public records request is made, that we understand, that we compare the definition of a public record under the law with the request that's being made to make sure that they match up.
Okay. You'll be making that decision.
Uh, I will, I regularly do, and, and, and unfortunately, there are occasions where questions are asked that are couched in the form of a public records request that really, um, are asking a question. They are not asking for a public record. And so those, those requests, I, uh, as graciously as I can, refuse to.
Okay, thank you very much. And for what it's worth, you have crashed and burned, and don't go to Daytona next year.
Sorry. I was within my time period until the question started, but.
Okay. We're done with the attorney's report. The next, the next item is for guests and public input, old and new and unfinished business, and we've asked that you want to back to three months. Anybody have anything?
We got the pictures on there. We just talk about it? Yeah, yeah. John and I went around today in an information, collecting, uh, status regarding the gates. At some point in time, I had the recommendation to board to adopt some kind of standards. What we, what we discovered is that there's a lot of variation in the existing gates. It's not clear that there was a particular standard applied when the first gates were winning, the gates went up, based, uh, reviewing some gates as well. So anyway, John's got the, John's got the pretty copy with the pictures.
I'm gonna give him that.
I have the, uh, just the digital copy here.
General public.
And, uh, so there'll be more information coming, uh, hopefully the next meeting or two, have some people put together, the board can discuss, and hopefully it'll, and hopefully will satisfy, well, it will not satisfy all concerns, I know that, uh, simply because everybody's got opinions, they vary a lot, but hopefully we can come up with something moving into the future to bring things into some sort of common compliance, and, uh, that will meet the needs of the community, uh, not, not be overly restrictive, but, uh, be appropriate for what we intend to do in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question?
So are we planning on getting rid of those gates?
No, there's no decision made whatsoever. There's a committee, there's a committee working on that, and when, when they get to a point, anybody's welcome to join the committee if they want to be on it. I believe they are, I shouldn't say that, uh, everybody.
So, so the opposite, it's John and myself.
Nobody else, nobody else stood up, so.
But what we, what we did, if you look at, I just brought the documents, I had, I had referred to it, but basically, we have a record now of every gate in, in, on the perimeter road. We know how far it is from the end of the tarmac from an individual street. We know the width of the gate, um, so that's, that's important, and we have pictures to back that up. So that's, that's what we have. That's where we started.
Basically, we went down Strike Lane Far East and started going every road north and south, taking photos, doing measurements.
Go ahead, documentation.
May I ask, what is the problem, your problem with the gate?
Well, I didn't say I had a problem with the gate, but there's been multiple discussions in just a few meetings that I've been to since, uh, since we moved here two and a half years ago about, should there be gates? What are the gates? Should they allow, you know, what should they allow? What size should they be? Uh, you know, can we drive cars back and forth? I mean, those are the, those are the subjects overall that come up that I can.
Can you give your history back when that, back before we, we, uh, needed the roads?
Name.
Excuse me, we, we, we need a name, and so, everybody here knows who's speaking.
Jerry Hassler, needs drive.
Thank you, Jerry.
I've been laying down here for 25, 26 years, and you don't need all those loogie loos going down your road, and then going across and coming back down. And it was presented right there years ago, that, that right there, when we had thefts out here, we had some pretty good favories and burglaries. And that right there truly has helped, right there, of people going out and chasing and coming back, and it has limited the traffic. Hey, you can have somebody go out there, knowing that that gate's open, then.
Jerry, if it helps any at all, nobody, there's no proposal on, on the board, nobody's talking about eliminating the gate or taking, taking the gate out.
We're looking at conformity.
I don't see why it is a subject that falls.
Well, that seems to be the contention that's going on, and that's why it is being brought before the board. It's, a number of people have brought it up, and a number of people are for it, some people are against it. Board's just listening, that's all they're doing. Okay, anybody else have anything? Jerry, were you done?
Thanks, thank you. So Mr. Salucci, if you'd like to volunteer, volunteering if you wish.
Perfect.
Okay, old, new and unfinished business.
Okay.
Okay.
We're moving on. Old, new and unfinished business. Contracts, canal perimeter, road cleaning, roadway trimming, culvert clean. Mr. Edinburgh is working on that, so.
Working on that, I'll have something to, uh, Supervisor Salucci.
This week. Thank you.
So table to next meeting?
Pardon?
Table to next meeting.
No, he's gonna be discussing with, uh, Chairman Salucci.
So no action taken?
Supervisor, no action, he's gonna take.
So table to next meeting, yes.
Hurricane Ian damage issues, resolution, repairs, FEMA payments for repairs. Before we done, discuss that, do you have anything further there? Okay. Manager job description.
So based on the job description under 298-19 Superintendent Plan Operations, 298-17 Secretary Treasurer, input of other board members, um, the approved manual, the list that I put together for description and duties, um, the due diligence period of which I've reached out to individuals for the position, I'd like to ask to enter into discussions with a proposed resident that has approached to doing the position, um, reviewing their resume, and enter into discussions with Chris and that individual, and she's here tonight, Audrey.
I'll stand up.
Thank you. And Chris to be an advisor to where there's kind of gray areas between the two positions, or not necessarily gray areas in respect to overlapping duties. Um, and then at the end result, have a solid description for Chris, Secretary Treasurer, and then the roles, and we can then approve the job description and have people secured for those positions no later than the April meeting. What's your opinion of that?
I'm, I'm in favor, but it's been way too long now, so I, I don't wanna rush through the things, but I think that we need to move forward. It's been a long.
We pretty much read all the stuff that you've said, what I worked on, you did.
It's now just kind of collaborating it all and getting the, an advisor.
Okay, so we have a date, the April meeting, and you're, you're gonna handle this up to that point and brief the board.
Yep.
So the job is going to be completed by April?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's technically already kind of under the statute anyways.
Right.
So it's just a matter of having Chris as an advisory as to what are the overlapping duties. And then we can discuss the budgets for that and compensation for those positions.
And Jim, you had some things that you wanted that person to do in, over and above what was in the statute. So you need to get, maybe get those things to Jennifer.
Okay, I can do that.
I can't really hear, she's talking positions or position.
It's a position, there's two, 28-19 Superintendent Plan Operations, which is the manager, and 298-17 Secretary Treasurer, which is what, yeah.
And they're both positions that are within statute 298, that encase out of your maintenance and operations of the water district. So we're not something creating, something just.
No, I guess I'm on two work positions.
Same two positions.
Yeah.
It used to be, yeah, it used to be one person, Julia, did it under all three roles, and then I started doing all three roles. We're gonna bifurcate the roles so that we have two people.
And it's been on the agenda, and then four months post Ian, you know, opportunities for people or organizations to come forward, so I feel like we're there at that point. Now it's just finalizing and buttoning up the actual, um, duties of each position as it relates to the statutes.
Okay, you sort of combined Secretary Treasurer into that, so we've done both, we've done both of those, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, for the agenda, yes. Thank you.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay.
Any motion for?
This is for the attorney, reimburse. Hang on. Were you?
I'm requesting the meeting with Chris and the proposed manager.
Okay, that was the other part. So there is not a description of a method to select the, the individuals to fill these positions on behalf of the district. I believe the, the cumulative concept is finish the job descriptions with the discussion with, with Chris, and also, and, right, and discuss with the supervisors, make sure that's all buttoned up, and then also have the discussion with the, uh, residents who can perform those tasks, and then all of that would be brought back at the April meeting.
If not sooner, the March meeting.
With, with the plan being to, uh, collectively approve the job descriptions and also, uh, approve the people to perform those job functions for the district. That's the cumul, that's the. Right, that doesn't require a motion, we already did that a few months ago, authorizing. That's right. And she's telling us April is a good time for it to happen by then. Or before. Or before, and I think that's good. The April's the deadline date.
Right.
Okay. Okay, now we, now we have something to work with. But thank you very much for your hard work and taking care of that.
So we're saying no action taken?
We don't need to, because we already have voted to allow her to take care of this.
So no action taken.
Not planned. She's basically just briefing us on the action she's been doing.
And the request to meet outside the board.
Yep.
Funds assignment resolution. Nope, wait a minute, reimbursement resolution, adopting a federal policy for mileage, for, for DM and reimbursement, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Uh, I prepared a resolution for your consideration. This is the, if you can pass those down, please ma'am, and I'll leave one for the record. Um, there are two documents here, one is the resolution and one is the actual policy, reimbursement policy. The first document is the resolution. It has the recitals at the beginning, um, which refers to the district and your authority generally. Um, it says then that the board is desirous of adopting a travel reimbursement policy, and then the third recital says Florida law, especially chapter 112.016 of Florida statutes. authorizes the district to reimburse board members and employees for certain travel expenses as is authorized by Florida law and the board of supervisors. Then we have the actual body of the resolution itself, section one deals with the authority of the district, which is based upon Florida law and also the enabling judicial decree that was entered April 3, 1969. We then incorporate the recitals, then we say section three, we have the adoption of, and say the board of supervisors hereby adopts the initial San Carlos Estates Water Control District Travel Reimbursement Policy, attached to it and made a part here of as Exhibit A, as that policy may be amended by applicable law or subsequent action of the board in the future. And then we have scrivener's errors, severability, rescission, and construction on effective date, and this will take effect immediately upon its adoption. That's the resolution. The policy itself is the final page of this document, page four of four. It says that the district adopts this policy effective today's date to govern payment and/or reimbursement of travel expenses pursuant to the district's authority granted by law. It says that except as described herein, the district shall follow the provisions of the Florida statutes concerning payment and/or reimbursement of travel expenses, especially section 112.061 Florida statutes. As said, statutory authority may be amended from time to time in the future. It says that all travel on behalf of the district must be pre-approved by the chair of the board of supervisors or their designee, and all travel expenses known in advance of travel must be pre-approved by the chair of the board of supervisors or their designee as a prerequisite to travel expenses being reimbursed or paid by the district. It says the district may prepare a request form for a board member or employee to request reimbursement. We have not done that, but you can do that in the future, this reserves the ability for you to do that. Then it says the travel expense reimbursement rate for travel reimbursement of district board members and employees shall be the travel reimbursement rates described by the U.S. Internal Revenue Service, the IRS. Asset rates may be amended from time to time, so we don't have to keep coming back and remembering to update as the rates change. And then I say where the travel expense reimbursement rate is not described by the IRS regulations, the travel expense reimbursement rate shall be as described by Florida law, especially section 112.061 Florida statutes, as that law may be amended from time to time. And the IRS rates will include reimbursement for mileage for the use of a board member or an employee's personal vehicle. Very, very, very little. Mr. Chairman, that's the, that is the resolution and the policy. It says use IRS rates, and where IRS rates don't apply, it says use state of Florida rates, especially those found in chapter 112.061. That's the statute, that's a Florida statute that governs travel reimbursement of elected officials and district employees.
You need a motion on the floor for that?
Yes, sir, if you want to approve the resolution.
Jennifer, we'd like to make the motion.
Motion to approve the resolution for mileage.
My second motion.
Aye. Motion carries.
So we'll put a resolution number on this and then get everybody to.
That'd be 001.
All right, and then that's it for that one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Go ahead and sign it.
Yes, ma'am. So that will remove that one from your agenda.
Funds assignment resolution.
Finally, on the last. Yes, sir, I also have three copies of the resolution. If you could pass those down. Providing for the assignment of fund balance, the board has previously adopted the resolution defining fund balance for the district. Fund balance generally being the difference between cash carried forward from last year, revenue received this year, and expenses for this year. Money in minus money out for expenses equals fund balance left over. So we defined fund balance before in a policy, and we said that there were several categories of fund balance that we would recognize and that we would place the district's fund balance in. I have prepared this resolution, but Ms. Chris is gonna have to confirm for me that I do have the correct assignments, initial assignments of fund balance. And this resolution does not have an attachment to it. Again, it has recitals, I'm not gonna go through these again, except to say we've designated previously five categories of fund balance, and now we're gonna assign money to those five categories. We have the authority section one, we have the incorporation of recitals section two, section three is the actual assignment of fund balance. We have five categories, as I just mentioned, the first category is non-spendable fund balance, we defined that in the previous policy, we have zero dollars attributed to that category of fund balance, I believe. The second category is restricted fund balance. We've defined that category of fund balance in the previous policy, and we have zero dollars in that category of fund balance. So we have non-spendable fund balance, zero, restricted fund balance, zero, committed fund balance this year is $239,902.40, which is the CIP one payment for this year, annual payment for this year. It's not the payoff, it's not the amount due, it is the this year's payment amount, 239.
That was the current balance as of today in the account.
That's, that's right, in the account, to pay that, excuse me, that's right. Ms. Chris is right, there's a little bit more money in the account than the actual payoff amount for the annual payment, right, Ms. Chris? Okay. That's $239,902.40. Then we have the fourth category is assigned fund balance. In that category of fund balance as defined, we have two subcategories. The first is, and these are based upon recommendations from your auditor, your new auditor, and the recommendation is to place $90,000 in assigned fund balance for operations between October 1 and December 31.
This was the discussion we had last, at the last meeting?
And the board approved that.
Board approved and agreed.
Right, and so $90,000 for operations between October 1 through December 31, and then the assigned fund balance, second category of assigned fund balance is $85,000 for emergency expenditures during emergency events, declared states of emergency, natural disasters, unanticipated emergency repairs, et cetera. $85,000 for that subcategory of assigned fund balance. Then the remaining unassigned fund balance is the fifth category, that's the pot of fund balance that all other dollars are placed, within which all other dollars are placed of fund balance. The unassigned fund balance category has, will have, if this is approved, $608,166.94.
That is the balance of Florida Prime account, the Northern Trust account, and our general maintenance account, totals as of today, which, less the 85 and the 90.
Okay.
So the 85 and 90 is out of the six?
Right, is not included in the 608,000. And neither is the 239,000.
Right.
That's not included either, that's a separate category. So all three, the $239,902.40, the $90,000, the $85,000, and the $608,166.94 altogether equals your fund balance.
Which if you look on your financial report, that would be the totals of those bank balances as of today.
Curious question, the 600,000 category, will that change if and when FEMA reimburses?
That will change as we pay bills, because the general maintenance is in there, but yes.
But also it'll change if we get reimbursement.
Right, yes.
Yeah, it could go both ways. Exactly, I understand.
This is just for a snapshot.
I understand.
Today, yes, sir, yes, sir. And so as revenue comes in, as money is expended, as FEMA pays, all those can affect the numbers. And generally speaking, however, will affect the unassigned fund balance number, the others are the hard numbers that you would expect to continue to see present until you pay off. That's it.
Thank you.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
Go ahead, John, you go ahead.
I did it last time, you don't.
I did it.
Okay, I think it looks on the floor.
Good.
I motion.
Okay, second that. That's everything that's in general maintenance, which is 78-70, plus the difference between these two balances in the Florida prime plus Northern Trust.
It is not your operating account.
It includes the operating account, that's what I said in the email.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just one second, please.
You may. So the day-to-day operations?
Mm-hmm, the general operating account.
Should not be in this fund balance.
That's fine, we'll do this, and if I need to amend this, that's why we have subsequent resolutions. I'll check with Ms. Chris, I'll check with the auditor, I'll make sure.
Check with Lisa, see what she thinks.
Yes, and we'll make sure that all of these numbers are satisfactory to the auditor, and if not, then I'll bring you in a new resolution to amend it, okay?
My concern, I didn't know whether the general maintenance was a committed dollar
or not, it really isn't, I mean, it is and isn't.
Yeah, not really. All right, so there you go, that's all for that one, Mr. Chairman.
So do you want to execute this now or do you want to change it?
No.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Maybe, but you have to sign.
Pardon?
You need to sign.
And I apologize, I had my head down. Did you vote to approve the resolution?
We did, yeah.
Motion second.
John did it.
John did it, and Son second, and Jennifer.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, John.
All right, the next item I put on the agenda, because I don't want us to get too far down the road and oversee kind of a couple of things. I want to do some pre-planning for the annual meeting, and I know it sounds like it's a little early, being February, and the annual meeting is in September, but last year we had it on the third Saturday, 9/17, and so we wanna make sure that we reserve the room. Do you all have an idea of when you would like to hold, do you wanna hold the annual meeting again on a Saturday, or do you wanna have it at your general third Monday meeting?
I think for the residents, it should be held on a separate date and time, and on a Saturday, so they can all have the opportunity, those who are working to attend without having to come to a meeting in the evening time and go to work tomorrow.
So can we go ahead and pick that day, and then we can get the room reserved?
Good, we picked the date of the next meeting, I have some upcoming things that I don't know the dates of as of yet, and I'd like the opportunity to do that before we selected it.
I need to do that, too.
Okay, so I'll do that for next.
Put it on the agenda for next meeting.
The other thing that came out of the last year's annual meeting was, oh, look at this, there is some concern that we did not have a strategy for a bid process for annual contracts before the budget discussions, and so the budget discussions I hope to start in May and June. Do, does the board want to try and do a bidding process for the swales and the contracting? And, I mean, I know you're trying to do it now for this year, but now we're talking about now for next year.
Okay, well, that's what the entire board has been trying to process.
Absolutely.
And do it like everything we do, we want multiple bids on it, so that's an absolutely yes on that, there's not any question there.
Okay, so, so then we want Ron to start that, maybe in conjunction with what he's doing now already.
That's what he is doing right now.
And so that would not only be just for this fiscal year, but now we're also gonna be asking for next fiscal year, as part of, because that was not part of the discussion before.
I think once we get the template down and the scope of services down, then that's something that'll be repetitive every year now, but that begs the question, do we, do we provide to the proposers an option, or the board's option, to extend this year after year after year? For example, a one-year agreement with two or three renewable annual agreements.
You know, I've thought about that a lot, because when a company is bidding on something and the work and the effort goes into it, the term of the board, the longest board member is three years, and I don't think that we should encumber a future board, so therefore, if we're to do that, we shouldn't extend it more than one, more than three years, or we should put it up and extend it one year at a time.
We can do one year at a time.
Like future boards that'll sit in these seats can do what they wanna do, however they see fit for the changes of the community at the time.
It would be one year, that would be my recommendation, is it be just like one year at a time, but go ahead and stay in the agreement that there could be up to three, four, five.
Well, it's a second, but the key is that the contract has performed, the duties and the scope, if they don't meet the satisfaction of the board, they don't get renewed.
The board would have to write at the end of that annual contract, and frankly, at any point during the year, I would think, that if they had an issue with the contract, they could terminate the agreement.
They work at the will of the board, and it shouldn't extend beyond that point, and we wanna make sure that we never put anything in place that doesn't allow the board members or the board, for the sake of the community, to put out a bid that lasts so long that everything changes and, you know, and we're paying more money. It's only fair to know what the market bears for the work that's being done.
The agreements all would have the provision in there that they could be terminated at any time for lack of performance.
Correct.
Okay, so for my purposes, if I could have those, we wanna have that bid process done before the May meeting, so that I would have those numbers for those contracts.
Actually, with all due respect, those bids need to be put out, because we're trying to get some of the culverts and ditch projects done before the rainy season.
Yep.
They can't do those in the rainy season.
Yep.
So that needs to get, and Ron is already.
Yeah, we're doing two different things, but.
If Ron gets his stuff done by the end of this week, I will do my part, I'll be ready to go out for a real contract proposal, and the RFP, the scope that I'm in, two weeks.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's this year, I'm talking next year.
Yeah, but once it's standard set in place, that's the standard from now on.
All right, that was all, thank you.
And I think you'll find that the RFP has been standardized, and the agreements have been standardized, and I remember. So I've done all of that, and it has a opportunity to terminate at the will of the board, I think just about any time in the year.
During the fiscal year, absolutely.
With notice.
But they'll perform, yeah, of course. And you know what, some of this will come up, it'll be part of the manager's responsibility, because the manager's gonna be reviewing the work, doing the course of work activities, reporting back to the board, and the engineering firm particularly say, you know, what are these guys doing, or they're doing a great job, whatever, so some of the manager's responsibilities will be the eyes and ears on the ground, supporting the board to make sure that these contracts are actually executed. I see the manager's role as being involved in the actual execution of performance of these contracts.
Okay.
All right, the next one you may or may not want to address at this point, and you may want to push off, but this has been a topic that's come up several times, it was a topic that was. But this has been a topic that's come up several times, it was a topic that was brought up at the last audit. When the CIP phase two was paid off in July of 2021, funds from the unassigned Florida Prime account were transferred to the general operating account and then paid, well, sorry, not to the general operating, they were paid, they were sent to the general operating account, and then they were moved to the CIP phase two checking account, and they paid off the loan. Those were unassigned dollars that was done. The no action was taken at that time to continue the tax assessments for those property owners who had not fully paid off phase two assessment at the time of the loan payoff. And in fact, the state was told, we will not need to assess for that any longer. The auditors last year raised questions about that as to the appropriateness of that, and so we want to know, are you in a position where you want to make a decision on what action you want to take in regard to that matter? Which could be nothing, right?
I thought the auditing firm said we had to correct that.
Well, we have to do something, but you have to make a decision.
Yeah, I think what the auditing firm said was, the board needs to decide how you want to address that.
But the word "how," did it allow for us to excuse it, eliminate it, or did we have to correct?
When I talked to the auditor, and remember, there was a board meeting that occurred when.
Excuse me for just a minute. For everybody who doesn't know, there were apparently some funds that were moved around, spent in an account it wasn't supposed to be spent in, and now we're having to correct the issue. So that's what's going on, so that's what the discussion is over.
Well, I would use different words to say that the board at the time, I wasn't there.
Previous board.
It was several years ago.
Good material.
And at the time, there was a decision made to pay off the balance on the CIP on the phase two bonds, and that's fine, you can do that. The part that the auditor took exception to was the source of the funds that were used to pay off the balance of the note. I mean, paying off the balance of the note was good, because it stopped the payment of interest after that payoff date. So that was good, saved the district money. But in the process of paying off that CIP phase two note, funds were used out of the general revenue.
But technically not, because funds were deposited from the Florida Prime account to the general revenue account, and then moved from general revenue account to the CIP phase two account. So the original source of those funds were not the general maintenance funds, they were actually the unassigned reserve funds.
Which were unassigned reserved funds that were not collected through the phase two.
That was basically, that was basically like taking money out of somebody else's account to pay somebody else's bills.
Well, it was, there are some residents who pay, who did, who were paying, not anymore, but who were paying a phase two assessment, right?
Correct.
A phase two assessment. They were not paying a phase one assessment. They were paying a phase two assessment, and they were paying a general maintenance assessment. There were other people that were paying a phase one assessment and a general maintenance assessment. Nobody was paying all three.
No, not, everybody's paying all three. Most people are paying all three. We got, if you have, if someone was paying a phase one assessment, nine times out of ten, they were paying a phase two assessment and the general maintenance assessment.
Okay.
So some people paid off the phase two early, some people paid off phase one early, everybody's paying general maintenance.
So the bottom line is that there were some people who should have continued paying a phase two assessment, and when the payoff occurred, that ceased, and it should not have ceased at that moment, it should have continued longer, so that those phase two dollars were collected from the phase two assessment payers beyond where it was cut off.
Okay, we're not accountants, we have to listen to what the accountant tells us, and so is the corrective action we need to take.
And so what the accountant has said, and we cannot, because of the contact that was made with the Department of Revenue, and the Department of Revenue has said, we're no longer going to need to collect the phase two assessments anymore, then putting those back on the tax bills as you collect, which is what you use to collect now, your assessments, we can't do that. When talking to the auditor, he and I talked about the possibility of asking, sending a letter to the phase two assessment payers who should have paid one more time, I think it was one more.
No, several.
Of paying their balances, of asking them, of saying, here's what your balance is under the phase two assessment. Because we paid it off early, you save some money, but because we paid it off early, it also came off of the tax bill, so we can't collect, we're not collecting any more on the tax bill, here's the collection, here's your letter, please remit. And submit that by mail, by a letter, by an invoice would be the way to do it. It will not be on the tax bill, it will be an invoice that would be sent to the first two.
So because we paid this off early, the people that worked, have not finished paying yet, are going to receive a letter, ask them then to pay one sum at one time? You can't do that.
Can I go and do it twice?
I mean, we have, I mean, these people had options to make the monthly payment and the taxes, and that's what they were doing.
We paid the money in, whatever account it came from, we paid that money in, so why should we pay it again?
Well, it's because people are still paying monthly payments.
Because, right, because some people, right, some people are paying a different.
Correct, some people are still paying it, but the board at the time made a decision, let's take this money, so maybe putting it towards maintenance or putting it towards emergency funds. We chose to pay off the loan, and now we're going to go and ask these people that were able to make those yearly payment on their tax bill to pay thousands of dollars.
I'm not.
Like homeowner, I mean, that's.
I'm not sure, so the question.
I don't know, the holders were done, were.
Yes, ma'am.
Were able to do that.
So they could do when they sold the house, when they're on them. The ownership.
They, so.
Yeah, well, to the next guy.
Well, I said.
But if they owe the money, if they owe the money.
But if the ownership changed.
No, you said they could be in a whole one month sum, if they got a bill, they have to pay a $5,000.
No, they're, okay, it's not, we're not talking that huge amount.
Yeah, they're not talking about that big amounts of money.
It's not a lot, it's not a large sum.
What is it?
I don't know, because I haven't spent the time, because I didn't want to spend the time, until we knew what direction we were going to, because it's going to take a lot of time. But the amount of the payoff was a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Part of that was the regular annual money, so we're probably looking, I don't want to say what we're looking at, if I don't know.
This doesn't affect everybody.
I understand that, I'm not talking, I'm just saying, homeowners that may not, I mean, $500 or a value of dollars that you're not expecting, maybe they're not.
Yeah, it could be something.
They're financially able to do that, whereas the board chose to pay that one off early, and now these homeowners are going to look at bill this, they're not going to pay their taxes for home payers.
That's like me, I financed starts, phase one, phase two, financed them all, because we had three lots to do it with, and it was too much to pay it all at one time. Now, since Julia paid that, however she did it, I don't know, we saved the interest, but we did not save the principal, so now we owe the principal of that loan.
And that, and Mr. Chairman, that could be divided.
So now I owe the principal of that phase two, but you don't owe the interest, they put the interest in. So now I'm going to give a bill for, oh my God.
Well, here's where it sits. First, we have to finish finding out what this is all about. No decision is being made here tonight, probably, and we just need to figure out how to handle it, but it has to be discussed.
Correct.
Okay, I have a question, I have a question.
Hang on a minute, Jason had, hang on, hang on, hang on. Jason had his hand up back there for parts of that.
You go first.
My husband said you go first.
The question I had, I heard a few months ago, you took money that we already paid once, you had enough money in reserves, a big pile of money over here, so where he takes a pile of money and go pay off this loan, right?
You're correct.
Then he asked a question, we need more money, because we need projects, that pile of money is for projects. You guys should have let the CIP one and two just go, and now we're talking about paying the CIP one off early. You're saying go again, again?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Actually not.
No, that's a totally different story.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
But you had to use the money, you had to get the money from somewhere, so either you're charging us too much money, you have way too much money in reserves to pay off a loan we already paid for ourselves, it's not our tax.
Please understand, the loans and things were all established a long time ago, it's nothing that the last board did, the board did for that.
I dropped the whole process, anything included all, so we had two more years left on that one project. We had, what I'm trying to make is, you had money in reserves, extra money, you paid off a loan early, but now you want to ask more money for more projects, that money in reserve, you pay off, that's what this money is going to be today.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the effort, the effort is to collect the, and the statement about it being the principal balance is a correct statement.
Just pretty much understand what it is, the owner's going to be paying the interest.
Yeah.
But the taxpayer, the homeowner, are you paying it?
No, but you're not in the right allocation. That's the whole purpose of all of this, is it's an effort to allocate the dollars that need to be collected to the people who have the property that received the benefit from the CIP number two capital improvement plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Number two.
Well, we paid the money in, the pot you took it out of.
Everybody did.
We all paid that money.
Yes, sir.
It's money that we paid in already, why are we going to have to pay it again?
Well, you may not, if you've got a.
That's an accounting error, that's.
No, sir. If you've got a CIP two property, then you didn't pay what you should have paid.
I paid the money in that you took out of that wrong pot to pay that off though, I paid that money already.
And that money should have been, that money should have been used for either general maintenance or a fund reserve balance that would be carried forward.
You just took it and did it, I mean, not you personally, but whoever did it. I paid the money in, whatever pot it was in, that was my money.
That's right.
You took that money, you paid it off, now you say, well, you got to pay it again, that doesn't make sense.
No, sir, it's not a, it's not a you got to pay it again. It's a, it's a. It's a reallocation, is what it is.
Now they're saying, here's a, they could have should have paid that money instead of raising one or maintenance, fifty dollars a year, or whatever it is in our tax bill. That could have been allocated for that, and we just continued paying a rose if we did, instead of you having three lots are going to get a bill now for three lots. Yes, we saved interest, but that pot of money, to me, in my mind, should have been in a reserve for maintenance, roads, drainage, whatever we needed it for. Not to pay off the loan or whatever, we're all making a lot of money.
Yeah, it was just an error, it was an accounting error that was made. We're not pointing fingers either, we're just trying to figure out how to correct it and make it up.
And I just feel as.
And it's, and the problem is that, that as a part of that process, the Department of Revenue was contacted and advised that the CIP assessments were no longer needed to be collected, excuse me, the CIP two assessments no longer needed to be collected, so that we are not, in my conversations with the auditor, we're not able to now use the tax bill as the method of collecting that CIP two assessment balance, whatever it is.
I understand all of that, I.
That was the mistake, that right there was the mistake.
That own three, four, one, again, you can watch it, I mean, it's just, that's all I'm saying.
Alright, it's back, Richard, back to you. What did the auditor say we could do? What were the options?
Chair, you wanted to speak?
I just have a, I think we're all, I think this is a simple question. If I pay my taxes and I owe $300, I'm just going to use $300 towards the CIP.
Right.
So if I got it taken away because the board paid for it, I still owe that money. So if I pay $300 to the board every year for how much money here, I'm, they're not wrong, and I'm not wrong, I'm still paying my bill.
Right.
The board's not saying, you owe me $5,000 in one payment, I think they're just trying to say, how do we get our money? I owe the money.
Yeah.
I owe it, doesn't matter, I owe it, like, if she paid hers off, we're off, but I still owe the money. But they're not, I don't think they're asking us to pay.
I understand that one show.
But we still owe the money, however, that's all, I think that's all they're trying to say. But Ray's not, we made money because we don't want to pay the interest.
Hang on, hang on.
But that's a better one, too.
Hang on, everybody, we need to direct this back to the chair, please. Hello? Let's direct the questions up to the front of the table. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
So what I just heard makes sense from a common sense standpoint and from, if everybody's pockets are connected to each other and all monies are fungible, then yes, that's not, that makes complete sense. But if this guy owes this guy $10, and I pay that off, he doesn't owe me $10. So if you paid off my debt, thank you very much, maybe I'll help you out and pay you back. Or is there a lien on my property? What's the obligation to say that I have to pay it off now that the Department of Revenue says no?
No, the Department of Revenue is not saying that you don't have the obligation. Department of Revenue is saying, I cannot use the mechanism that was in place to collect the assessment. That's all that, that's all that that says.
You still owe the money, it's just how they can collect it, is what you're saying.
What note that I, or what lien against my property obligates me to pay that loan which was already paid off? Some question.
Do you want me to answer the question?
Yes, yes, it's on the law.
So, so as I said, as I said a little bit ago.
Give James her, he's patiently waiting.
Yes.
Would you like to say something?
I still go back to the deal of the property owner that owned that property when this was done, he sold that property now, so now you're going to go back?
No.
And you're going to make the new owner pay it.
New owner pay it, yes. It goes with the property.
And you know where, and you know where that's going to go? Because you know what they got? Title insurance. Title insurance said everything was clear and done, so now you're going to another big mess.
That's why we have Mr. Richard here.
I'm not trying to put him between the rock and the hard spot, but.
Well, this whole thing is sort of a confusing issue, and this is a discussion time, it's not a decision-making time.
I hope you got title insurance.
Just curious, what was the interest rate on the loan?
I don't know.
I remember reading that, it was, I don't know, eight or seven, I don't know, it was less than that. I don't think we have an exact answer. It was like four point.
It was a bond?
Four and a half. Yeah, four and a half, four point four nine, four point seven nine. I remember reading that one of the documents. Wasn't a lot.
It wasn't a lot.
It wasn't a lot, but I think, let's use a simple math, it was a hundred dollars borrowed at five percent interest for ten years. You're paying the five dollars interest, five percent, a hundred dollars, and the next year, each year you pay $10 off. Now, year two is ninety dollars plus five percent, and keep going. At some point, the cumulative amount of the five dollars of interest every year was paid off, that would have been for the ten-year loan, let's say in year seven of the ten, they paid off the ten years of the five percent. So the ten years is fifty dollars is owed. And they paid, they paid like twenty, twenty-five, let's pay the other twenty-five dollars.
I'm just wondering what we save by paying it off.
I don't know, I think what happened was. I don't know, I, I think what, what, what happened was, and I don't think we should.
I mean, I know this is.
The board, the board that made the decision and the, the accountant we had at the time looked at it and they made a decision based on what they thought they knew and they thought they could help save money on the interest rate by paying it off early. So they transferred some money from one account into another account to put the extra money in to pay it off. When that happened,
Right.
then the new accounting firm came in and said, well, you weren't, you know, that wasn't something you were allowed to do. So we were going to save X amount of dollars by paying that off. They didn't realize that it was going to get taken off the tax rolls. But because it got paid off, it got taken off the tax rolls. And the people did, the people that owed the money just didn't continue paying it until it was paid off. Overall, it was to benefit everybody. And it, it just didn't work out that way. So now we're having to figure out how to resolve it. That's all.
So what is the legal action of collecting the money from the people that still owe?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman.
Just continue on. Okay. Because the tax collector cannot be used as a method of collecting dollars, what I've discussed with the auditor is to take some effort to attempt to collect the dollars or a good faith reasonable effort to attempt to collect the dollars. Um, the, there is not a lien in answer to a question that was asked earlier that we will be creating. And in essence, what we will be doing is determining who the CIP, the phase two people, uh, properties were.
Right.
We don't, you're not assessing people, you're assessing properties. Somebody talked about, about, uh, property being sold in the past. So we're assessing the properties, we'll figure out who the CIP phase two properties were and we will send them their assessment for the annual amount of principal only, for however many years they should have been collected. If it's two years, we'll send them a letter for two years of, uh, uh, saying, your annual amount of principal for this year is this number of dollars for this, for your parcel of land. Please rebent.
That's one option.
It won't be on the tax bill, it won't be on the, um.
You know, you, you're still going to end up in the issues of the enforcement of collecting that money. And it's going to be more of a person who feels like, yeah, you're right, I owe the money, I'm going to pay it. The other ones, the other ones may or may not. I've got, I think maybe, we've got an annual meeting coming up, we're going to do a mailing. Either the board decides with the attorney and our current, um, um, accounting firm, how we handle this. I don't think, I don't know, but I don't know how much money is really involved in it. Uh, this, this hasn't been discussed. And like I said, this whole thing is about discussion right now. So may, maybe one of the things we should do is include in our annual mailing a form that asks the people how they feel about it. And through a vote from the people, decide whether or not we pursue it or don't pursue it. Or whether we determine before then that we just handle it in-house and if it can be written off, we do that. I don't, I don't have the answer to it.
Why do we have to pay?
Pardon?
I mean, I think finding out a dollar amount.
That's, that's what I think is the next move. So I think this is going to be tabled to the next meeting and we need to come, have at least an idea on what the dollar amount is and how that spreads out amongst the entire community as a whole. If, if we choo, if we choose to figure out how to write it off. I don't know. I don't have that answer. Mr. Nagy, and then we need to move on.
Two questions. First of all, this is voluntary tax. I mean, I might pay it with good love for that. Number two is, um, a regular note, didn't that require things to be put in the properties?
Until they were paid off. So this note was paid off, when the note was paid off, that took care of it, yes.
So that would be a lien off the property?
Yes.
Related to the bond, yes, sir.
Yes.
What if?
Can we have your name, please?
Gordon Smith.
Thank you.
What if we sell the property and now you have phase two and you're going to send the person a note saying that they owe X amount of dollars, whatever it happens to be? They're not going to be too happy with that, just like James Moss said. Because we sold one piece of property, then this is going to happen. The other two, I'm still holding on to. And now I'm going to be liable for that principal payment on those other two. And the other people are going to be liable for the other lot. Is what you're telling me, if, if all this goes through.
It, it, it's something we have to work out. I appreciate what you said because the same thing applies. But the people who own the property, whoever they are at the time, are benefiting from what they got. So therefore, it should be up to them. But like Mr. Nagy said, don't hold your brick. So, is it, is it worth the, is it going to be worth the effort to, for, and, and I look at it as a whole for all of the taxpayers in the community. If we make a decision to not go after it, that means we're going to hold. If we divided this down the middle, you guys are going to pay part of their bill and it's over. But the problem is, if we decide to, to go after it, how much of it will we really collect over time? Is it going to work, be worth the attorney's fees, the accounting fees, the administrative fees, et cetera, to try to collect it? Yes, sir, Jerry?
Okay, I have been involved in thirty-five, forty real estate transactions in San Carlos State. And on some of those, the lender on some of the property asked for all of the assessments to be paid in advance before it was closed. And so you go back, there you're going to pop, all in the substance there and even add on to what James said. You're, you're going to have to get history. This is going to cost a lot of money to go into every track number and get history. Yes, I've got seven lots.
I agree.
You want me to pay it? Well, if it's, if it's coming, but I got to have everybody else's.
Yeah, I got, I got ten out here right now myself. And I got to pay it. It's the same, it's the same problem. But if I owe it, I'll pay it. But it's, it's whether or not you're going to collect from everybody out here. And, and if, and if only a port, a small portion is going to pay, then why should we go to the effort of trying to collect it and have more expenses to you guys?
I think that it's not going to be worth the stamp that you're going to send, send out right there to get anything back.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you just need to start off to find out what dollar amount.
Exactly, well, yeah.
I think that's your first step.
Yeah, we're not closing anything.
If it's going to cost all of this and all of you guys and attorney fees and everything with what we, what's left, then I'm sure it's probably going to be. Move it on. But I think that's your first step, if it might be a dollar amount even it's.
I appreciate that and that's what, that's what we will do. And with that, if you guys are okay, we're going to move on.
Yes.
Let's move on.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your participation in that. I'll answer. Use and connection fee, going back to Mr. Edenfield here.
Yeah, okay. Uh, use connection permit fee rate discussion. At the last meeting, I said I would do an analysis of the current permit fees that we are paying or collecting and what we are paying for the engineering costs associated with the oversight of those use and connection fees. And I have the email right here. We are charging, when anyone wants a new use and connection permit, the fee is seven hundred and fifty dollars. The fee has been seven hundred and fifty dollars for many years. And I couldn't go back to the very beginning. The furthest I could look back was October of two thousand and four and it was seven hundred and fifty dollars back in two thousand and four. In looking at the five-year average of the fees that are associated, engineering fees associated with the right, right-of-way permitting, it is costing to about two hundred and ten percent of the amount that we're receiving over the five-year period. In other words, it's costing us about fifteen hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents to deal with that use connection permit. And we're getting seven hundred and fifty. So we're spending more than we're receiving to process that use and connection permit. And so the question is, the use of connection fee has not been increased since two thousand and four. Does the board want to consider changing that dollar amount?
And what would it need to come up to to correct that? I know you just said that on.
Well, if you, if you came up to the av, five-year average, you're looking at fifteen hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is kind of an odd number, but, I don't know what other current rates are around the state. I don't know what Mr. Edenfield feels, if that, if that number could come down at some point in the costs.
I mentioned earlier when we were talking about the number of inspections. And I think if you go back to last month's meeting also, you'll see we've got substantially more inspections than we actually have outstanding or ongoing projects. Some of these are getting two and three.
Get the backlog.
Re-inspections on the final inspection where, you know, it's very explicit what we're expecting when they're done in this. Final stabilization, finished grading, clean up the right-of-way, make it look good, make it, make it the way it ought to be when you call in for your final inspection. What we're finding is we're coming out, there's no sod, there's concrete, there's rust, there's debris. And so we're having to then turn around and communicate with the applicant, uh, till they fail. And right now, there's no re-inspection fee.
Didn't you just tell me that twenty-seven inspections, that about five failed?
It's five or six that failed.
That's twenty percent.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, it's five or six we could get off our books if they would, you know, complete the work as, as, uh, per the standard. I would suggest we look at implementing a, a re-inspection fee or a final inspection fee and then have re-inspection fee after that. If you, if you call us in, we're here to do the inspection, uh, which is the cost of the district. We come in and it fails, you know, substandard, doesn't meet the standard. Uh, then we fail it, we notify them that it failed and then require a re-inspection fee.
Just to add to the record, uh, from a builder's perspective, you go in, community development, building inspection department, fail. They charge it.
Yeah.
So that's very common.
Well, in this small community, we're all in the same boat. So if you got, I mean, if you don't want to be paying for somebody, a new person's inspection fee or if I build a house out here and I need a culvert pipe and I don't comply, I don't know that you guys all want to kick in to help pay for that. And that's basically where we're at. Mr. Mr. Nagy, yes, sir.
So just in the interest of saving money for the landowners, have you considered writing the specs in your code, submit it to the city and have the city use their inspectors to come out?
Sure.
But the city's not going to inspect the bar right of the left. Right.
We have a manual that's completely.
Okay, everybody, please, please.
The exist, the existing manual is available online, if you'd like to go take a look at it. Is, is fairly explicit with respects to, uh, what they're required to do and what it's required to be once it's final. I mean, there are minimum standards in there that they're expected to. And we've been fairly conversant with the applicants, uh, when they call in for the final inspection to make sure, say, okay, make sure everything's in order, you've got your side, you've got your final stabilization, you've got the bruts out of your right-of-way, you know, we've got a good look at product, we'll come down and do the inspection. And still we come out there and there's boulders and yada, yada. So we do have a standard that's out there, it's available, it's, it's, uh, all the applicants are well aware, so.
I'm not saying there's not a standard, it's a very long standard. I would say fifteen hundred dollars or even seven fifty for a permit for, is, seems excessive to me.
You know, when you look at the prices around the state of Florida, and I've looked on a number of cities, it, it does seem excessive. The only difference being, David, is if, if they turn around and I, since I've been on the board, which hasn't been that long, I've seen a number of the contractors that have not complied with and/or torn up ditch systems which they need to fix. Now, if, if we're, if we are going to continue in the way that we've been doing it, then how, and, and our, we're having a lot more new starts on construction than we've had before. And the projects are getting bigger and they're, they're, they are not paying, they don't want, they want to use the ditch system to get dirt, uh, septic systems, swimming pools, things into the backyard once they started the project. And sometimes even getting pavers down over culvert pipes. They need, they, you, it's hard to ask them to use, not use the ditch system, but they need to put it back.
Okay, so, so, I agree with all that, I'm just, if you look, stand back and look at, seven hundred and fifty dollars is not sufficient. From an engineer's standpoint, there's a system failure here. The question is, what is that system failure? I don't know what it is, but I'd suggest we solve that problem rather than start adding on fees to just.
We have a lot of contractors who are very disrespectful to the community and who do not, and who do not care. I mean, you go, there's, at the end of deeds, the guy that's building twenty-four thousand, thousand, you can see where the trucks has damaged the road. In fact, he's still got the culvert clogged, but the, the, the road is actually damaged in front of where the water pipe. And you can see it's, where that's going to have to get fixed.
So why are they disrespectful? So I.
They don't care. They don't care.
It's why don't they care for your work here?
They don't care.
Why don't they care?
Jason, did you have something, please? Everybody, please.
I think with the permanent application for your culvert, you have to have an approved contract to do the work, correct?
Correct.
So if the guy is too busy doing work there forever, we're specifying the standard. I don't think raising the homeowner's raise right, if you would have charged that contractor normally, their respective fee, that's between the, the contractor. It's not making the airbrusher price go up.
Oh, no, that's, 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 okay, are you talking about everybody who has a housing start? Are you talking about the people in general?
If you have to get a permit, seven hundred, I stated, seven hundred and fifty bucks for a permit, I have to pick people off your list or be my own, which is must be your speaker people, if they're not cheap.
I know.
So why would the, why would the extra inspection fees not be on the contractor? It was supposed to be the first time, charge him the money. He's out. He calls and he, they call you for the inspection, I don't call you for the inspection.
The contractor's going to turn around and, and charge the builder.
That's between us. It, it's not between, every, every, if I hired a good contractor, why would I pay him the money? I think you guys should do a re-inspection fee and call it a day, you know, with the raise rate.
I agree.
So your suggestion is that we put a re-inspection fee on for that particular project?
Yeah, they got to pay them to get the permit. You have to have that culvert done before you get your permit from the city. Or you can't seal your house until it's done.
I just want to see it handled, I don't care how we manage it. And I think that's a reasonable, reasonable idea on how to do that. And so I don't have a problem with that kind of a.
In fact, Jason, once there's a manager for the board,
Yeah, that'll help a lot.
they're going to be able to go around and say, whatever you're doing here, make sure you clean it up because you're getting a charge again. You're not doing this correctly. And they can enforce the standards that are on the website anyway.
Culverts are expensive out here and just adding more money for a permit thing is, let the, let the builder do it. Somebody else do it. They don't do it right the first time, that's their problem.
Yeah, our objective is to keep the homeowners' costs down out here, the people who actually live here. And you shouldn't have to share in somebody else's problem.
I think the numbers you're using here for five years ago, we, we hired that other engineer because he charged too much money. They're skewed. So you use Morse's few numbers, you guys definitely because you charged too much.
I, I can't say that he charged too much. I think Ron's fees are about the same as what Morse's few fees per hour. So I'm, I'm not, I can't say that he overcharged.
We have had a lot of extra theme effort here.
Yeah, I know. I have a breakdown, it's all broken down.
Well, and it was circling back to.
I was talking about your per hour. All right, so the discussion, is there going to be, are you, are you, do you want to have a rediscussion later? You want to think about it and bring it back next month? Or do you want to, to take Ron's suggestion and have him update the materials on the, um, the paperwork?
Well, I, I happen to agree with Jason. It doesn't seem right to, to, to pawn that off to everybody. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Be safe going home.
Have fun.
I, I agree with Jason and, and it should not be a burden upon other building projects to have to pay more money when it's one person doing the damage. So whatever we move forward with, I think we should either, uh, have a re-inspection fee every time you have to go out or, or we put, put a, make them put a deposit on that they get fully refunded at the end if, if they comply with the rules to begin with. If they don't, it gives us money to fix the project. So one way or the other, it needs to be resolved to the benefit of the taxpayers up here.
There have been some thought earlier. There had been some thought early on about having a bonding process by which each contractor had to. Provide a bond to the district. Toss that out for discussion if that's of interest. I know some of the contractors that we're dealing with do not have bonding capacity.
Or they have escrow amount. One of the, one of the things that I've seen in other subdivisions, and we haven't, as far as I know, we have not experienced that yet. Is when you're doing a construction project and the dump truck comes in and it's a tri-axle truck. And it's making a hard turn onto the road and it's breaking up the shoulder, who's gonna fix that? Does that, does that become a burden of us, or does it become a burden of the project to put it back the way they found it? I'm asking, I'm, it's open for discussion if anybody has anything they'd like to say about that, but in, in, Mike, go ahead.
If you break it, you fix it. Uh I mean, I saw, I saw one of the big, one lot being cleared on strike. And one of those big two uh container uh devices where they pick up all the logs and throw it in, just like the disaster recovery stuff. Basically tore into the shoulder and tore the shoulder right at the entrance to that lot. It's the one we were looking at on strike lane today. And those kind of things eventually are gonna break the system down. They ought to be responsible for that kind of stuff.
I, I have, I have.
Nobody but me that saw.
I happen to agree with you, and as, as a board up here, all we're trying to do in these discussions. Is figure out how to have the result in the benefit of the taxpayers of our community. And which the new people are gonna be part of as, as time goes by. But the contractors doing the work or the subcontractors doing the work have to be responsible for their actions.
So I make a motion, Jason's idea of re-inspection fee, and say it's seven fifty permit, additional seven fifty, it's an escrow. That give a refund from final inspection, if everything, do everything according to our, uh what's posted on the website. And you file eventually the manager for skewed procedures. So when you get, and you'll get that money back, because you can't start your building until you get our permit for access. So this is not a long-term escrow amount sitting there for two years. And since we know the average right now is around fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars, just make it a double. Double seven fifty, and now seven fifty, and then you get it back when you will say they did it correctly. Now, maybe we have language that says that you get half of it back when you get your permit. And you get the remainder back when you get your final CO for the building to make sure you didn't care up the culverts while you still do the rest of your work. Just an idea.
We've actually been, when we have a culvert permit and no home construction. We're doing the final uh or pre-fi- basically it's a pre-final inspection. And we're not issuing the final inspection till after the construction is completed and they are seeking the CO. They will contact us, and at that point, we're giving them the final sign-off, just to cover any damage that occurs.
Same idea, we keep that section seven fifty, so they get, we have to sign off before they get their final CO.
We're just withholding sign-off until all the work is done.
You're building a half-billion dollar home, you're gonna complain about extra seven fifty, then don't build the home back there.
I think that is what you said, re-inspection fee, because what if the builder surpasses that seven hundred and fifty dollar escrow?
Would you have re-inspections be deducted at seventy-five dollar increments from the escrow amount? So if you fail an inspection one time, takes seventy-five dollars done out of the seven fifty in escrow.
Is that the customary charge? Is that the customary charge? Is that a customary charge?
It's a reasonable charge. I think Lee County's sixty, seventy-five, maybe.
And he was like fifty, sixty dollars, everyone did, so.
All right. And then you said on the, on the second visit?
And if you fail the second one, another seventy-five dollars, and you could basically fail it ten times. With the escrow that they have. Now, the bookkeeping on the escrow would be Chris.
I was gonna throw your direction.
It's engineer, not, not secretary of.
Yeah, we, we'd have to, we'd have to come up with some accounting issues, because it would be almost like a committed fund. And um, so it would have to be tracked.
Right, absolutely.
You're making my job more complicated. I mean, too much.
The alternative to that would be seven fifty fee upfront. And then at each failed inspection, we send them an invoice for seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
You gotta hold the, you gotta hold the fee up the fire some month.
We've got the final sign-off. They won't get a CO until they get the final sign-off. I mean, City of Beneath Springs has been very good about that, building department, not issuing COs for buildings until they have.
Clear with us.
I mean, they, they've contacted us and said, hey, these guys are looking for a CO.
It seems to me that with the CO, we have the leverage to get the work completed without charging additional money. So now what we need to figure out is what our actual costs are uh for having the engineering work done for that. And I, I don't know that we need to raise the rate if, if we have a means for getting it done. My disappointment is that I've seen projects out here in the past few years that we have spent a lot of time. With our engineers, et cetera, but mostly we hit the rainy season and we've got nothing unless we spend the money. To clean the ditches at that time, which then it comes out of everybody's pockets. We've had, we've had uh the gutter systems totally occluded and, and the drains not be able to even get the water to them. Because what some of the uh construction project people have done. And the means is, how do we correct that? I mean, you know, you're in between, how do you correct it and how do you do it reasonably?
Well, one of the things we're requiring on all new permits is for them to add their best medical practices. Which essentially consists of silt fences across the right of way at the property lines. And then silt fences across the face of the property up to the driveways. So, you know, whatever erosion does come off the soil from the side is contained on the side, not out in the swell.
Do you have anything with this? I don't, I, I personally, I don't know where to go with it.
Well.
I think it's a motion.
I think there's a motion on the floor that says basically, keep the seven fifty fee. But existing permits and future permits, say there's a seven fifty escrow that you get back.
That's future, future one.
Future, yeah. You get back, if you've done everything, keep the swells clean, your, your subs and your other people don't drive through, you don't. The one down with the deets that stuffed all that sand, you know, stuff like that. You say, this is, if you wanna build here, here's the rules.
Can you get with the city and, and basically say, we have to do an inspection before you get your CO on your house and move in?
Yeah, we, we are doing that, but when it takes a year to build a house, we go through rainy seasons of which it compromises the.
The system.
Our system that we have out here, and that's, and when it gets compromised like that, all of that silt that runs into the ditches. Goes down in front of your house, into your culvert pipes, and on down the way, and it's just a chain reaction. And it's not like ten years ago when we didn't have all these building starts going on. We've got so many now, they're on every street.
Mike and I drive around today, counted close to forty properties that are near finish. To, an excavator got dropped off today, I wait, get around the tractor that was going in, it was really starting to knock down trees. So we're in all phases, and it was almost in every street, just about right now. That's a lot, when there, how, how many buildings are here, a five hundred?
And I think we have twenty-three miles of roads within the system.
So if there's around five hundred buildings here, and there's another forty coming up, that's eight percent. That's a lot of growth for this area, quite frankly.
It'll keep going unless the cotton crashes. Then they'll start buying the little ones, the old houses, tearing them down, and putting bigger houses.
Well, you're probably gonna, yeah, you're probably gonna see that as this goes on anyway. It is good and late, guys, if there's any more things that are pertinent.
John, were you going to finish your uh motion to include the seventy-five dollar fit, re-inspection fee if it fails?
It needs to be a second, it needs to be a second motion.
A second?
To, to, no, I'm sorry, you need a second motion to.
Add the assessments of penalties for seventy-five dollars.
To have a re-inspection fee of second.
And I second that motion, re-inspection, seventy-five. The only question is, is it coming off the seven fifty escrow or independent escrow?
Well, first let's get a second on your first motion.
You do.
I got a first and a second, and a second on the first.
And is that, okay, all right, we got that one. Now the next one.
And you have a motion to impose a seventy-five dollar re-inspection fee.
Correct.
Upon failure of a first inspection?
I don't think you need to put that in there. Upon failure of inspection.
Yeah.
On this direction.
Engineering firm is gonna make the decision, that you failed.
Just say a seventy-five dollar.
Re-inspection. And how is that going to be collected?
If you guys see you have escrow, I think this seven fifty escrow is your, your nugget if somebody screws up. But the seventy-five dollars should be the guy building, cock the culvert. You, he gets it built, he pays him. If he doesn't pay it, somebody's gonna pay it. If the builder of the culvert already has the site, he screwed up, he should pay seventy-five dollars.
You're talking about the guy who's actually building the culvert?
So, that's what you should be getting. If he's listening to the homeowner, he's the, don't. How to keep billing, he can bill, he should know this, that seven hundred and fifty bucks is made up. It's not the homeowner's responsibility.
No, it'd be the contractors.
He hired a guy off your approved list, so the guy that already approved the work, he's gonna call the state to do the culverts. The bill then, which should go right to him before he gets another inspection, he can't get the second inspection, he can't get the first inspection.
But the prob- but the problem, most of the problems come from the building process, not from the installation of the culvert.
Seventy-five, seven hundred dollars.
So, so it's the damage that is occurring.
That's a seven fifty nut hold back. So then, to clarify, seven, motion for you have a seven fifty escrow amount. And also a seventy-five dollar re-inspection fee, independent seven fifty escrow.
Yes, that's what I was saying, two motions.
Does the Florida statute, for this thing, the permitting, permitting statute?
Yes.
Yes. Three people said yes, right, do you think?
Yes, it does. The lawyer's perspective, the builder's perspective, yes.
So Ron, are you, you're gonna update our documents?
Yes.
Okay.
We will get the website and the uh, and the documents updated.
And just to make this, from my perspective, clear, as a homeowner, not a secretary treasurer. I, I, we're not trying, I don't think the board is trying to rate the residents or nickel and diamond. I mean, we want people to build and come into the community and be members. But same time, I don't think every taxpayer in here should be paying for, out of their tax dollars. For the repairs that are necessary because someone built a house.
Agreed.
And that's what's been going on.
And I do expect with time, the, the costs will go down from us for the district, which spent a good deal of time. As you remember, the last meeting, you signed about a dozen right-of-way use agreements, we're, we're going back and recapturing those and getting the reuse. Or the use agreements um for all the properties, whether they're under review right now or not. So we're going through that effort, and we do have um other things. They're technically right-of-way permitting activities, but not specifically relevant to any of the current applications, so.
And so you might wanna, in your, in your allocations of, of the bill? Cause we, we did increase the budget for the engineering because of the transition, and maybe that's part of transition. Not really right-of-way permitting.
We need to conclude this and move on.
I'll put it there.
You think?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so the next one?
Thank you for coming this evening. We hope you'll come, we hope you'll come to our next meeting?
Yes, I'll be here for sure. Bye, have a great night.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's not the door. You'll be in the closet if you go in there.
Okay, Jim, this one's yours.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay, this, this goes back to. Again, the same thing about what homeowners pay and don't, homeowners don't pay. As was just mentioned ago, a minute ago, you said you counted forty new from things that you started. To uh, as, as our community transitions from rural. To having houses where people are coming in and bulldozing, as you guys all know, and. Back where you live, you see it a lot, every single tree seems to be taken down. We're trying to, at least I am, why am I going to pay? I own, again, I own a number of lots out here, Jerry has owned and does own, but there was a time when. There were so many vacant lots, we needed to be responsible and the entire community paid for trimming whoever owned. I mean, if you had your own lot, I've always mowed my ditches. Tony comes by, but I always mow the ditches of the properties that I own. I maintain them, I clean the fronts of the culvert pipes, and I trim off my shrubberies so that they don't overhang the ditches. I've always done that, I've never come to a board meeting and said anything, because we had so much woods out here. Today, we've got a lot more homes than we have woods, and I think there's a time when we need to decide. About why are we paying to clean somebody else's property? So the homeowner of that property, whether it's vacant. Or whether it's a house that has new growth on the front of it that they planted, they should be responsible for their own. That shouldn't be a neighbor having to pay for a neighbor's property. And that's the discussion. I put it on the agenda, and that's, uh, I happen to believe. That it's time that they, we, people responsible for what they. Put out there is responsible for it, and that means that if you've got berry bushes hanging over, we shouldn't have to hire a contractor. To come clean the front of yours, you should be responsible for taking care of that, so. I don't know how we get from right here to there, but.
So are you talking, are you talking primarily brush trees, that sort of thing? You're not talking about the grass mowing?
No, 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 I, I, I am sorry if, if I misrepresented that, maybe I did because I said I mowed my own grass.
Yeah, I just wanted.
No, no, we, we, we hire Tony to go along and make sure that all of the ditches and all of the swales and. And from our property lines to the road are all cut and mowed. But now, we're sporadically getting fewer overgrown lots on each street. So why should all the people on the street who is, are responsible for their property and taking care of it? Pay to clean up the lot that's not? I know if you go to Cape Coral, and boy, that's a, probably a bad word, but if you go to other cities. And the city sends somebody out to mow your overgrown lot, they bill you for it, yeah.
Just a, I just, I think we should keep this simple, so um. If we have a manager, and the manager's just phone the owner, whether they live there or it's an empty lot, and phone them and say, look. We need to mow under your brush, can you, and if they don't do it, then he can do something. Because the last time we did it, my neighbor was supposed to get a call from, or a letter from the lawyer, let's not use lawyer letters for the first.
Well, the intention was, the really, the intention was not to do that, Mr. Da- David, but, but, you know, and simple is always the best way. But it's, you know, this is gonna be something new and different, but our community's growing and it's changing.
Right, so let's just have the manager.
And, 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 and that's good enough, because we have a standard as to where the lens should be. And that happens to be the water management's property lines, which is the power lines. So on one, on one side, you got those.
It's very easy, in fact, I was at that meeting, I listened to the tape, so I walked over and I told them about it, and it's fixed, so. These are our neighbors, right? This isn't just like.
Oh, we're not, look, look. I, I'm not trying to take, the biggest thing is I'm not trying to take money out of your bank account to pay for your neighbor's stuff. And it seems very clear.
Well, no, but this guy turned out to be an eight-year-old lady, guy helped him out.
That's totally different. That's totally different. How many communities, how many, I've been in so many communities as a firefighter that I've gone and helped paint houses, I've trimmed people's grass, I've done all of these kinds of things, and we have our chosen people that we know the difference. You know, or at least I hope we do. And I, and as this community should, should be a community of everybody being involved, then I'm all for that.
So this is a very great exercise in self-discipline. Let's just keep it simple and self-disciplined. That's, that's my philosophy.
I am.
You could.
Yes, Mike.
Well, well, notification is appropriate, and you know, you did come back into compliance is appropriate. There will be people who will ignore that. And in those cases, we need a process that we go in, the, the, the district goes in, cleans it up, and charges the person for it. It's not that they come in unannounced without warning. I, that would not be, that would not be good. But, yeah, I don't wanna pay for other people's trimming it up.
So what is it? It's thirty foot from the center of the road to what you're talking about? So you measure thirty foot?
I believe that's, I believe that's what it is.
Yeah, sure, Robert.
I know on one, pardon? I know on one side, it's easy, the power lines are there. So it's easy to see that. And it's, it's just, and nope. You know, I, I bit off more than I could probably chew here, but I'm just trying to say, hey, you know, it's, it's like we're getting so built out now. We, the rules need to change. We shouldn't hire a contractor every year to go through when he's only trimming twenty percent of the properties. And we've been paying a lot of money to do that. And I don't care who the contractor is. And it's just getting to what we need to do that. And, and that's all it is. And because we're using a bidding process, anybody can bid for the jobs. And they'll get approved by the board or whomever. And once a year, we have them come in and just give us their price, what they want to take care of that service for the year.
Right, okay.
So Jim, you didn't make the motion that's, that says that the manager would send a letter to the-
Why don't we wait till we have a, why don't we wait till we have a manager? You know, I, you know, this, I might get a bunch of phone calls, and maybe I don't even wanna talk about this again. Okay? But with all due respect, I just don't think I-
So we had a discussion.
Well, that's-
It says discussion, so we're done.
That's what the board meeting is about, is discussion, so.
All right. The next item is, I had put down to move a hundred and, a hundred thousand to a hundred twenty-five thousand from the Northern Trust Unassigned Reserve Fund to Florida Prime Fund. And the reason to do that is to increase the interest income that we would be earning on that money. I did email Northern Trust to recall, find out what the minimum balance to avoid fees. Or I have not gotten that email, which is why I have the range there. The Northern Trust account is paying point five percent on the hundred and thirty-five thousand that we have sitting there right now. Florida Prime is paying over four percent for this money that we have. So to me, it seems like it's a, you know, we put a hundred, we took two hundred out, let's put a hundred back in. Let that earn three and a half percent more than we're getting right now.
That was a little brain.
Motion?
You want a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah.
A motion that we transfer whatever out of the amount?
Why don't we just say a hundred thousand?
Check the balance, but let's say it's a minimum a hundred thousand. Make sure it goes into, what's it, Northern Trust?
It'll go into-
From Northern-
From Northern Trust.
To Florida Prime.
To Florida Prime.
A second.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Now we have the approval for the board minutes. January board minutes.
Now you got the F Y E, nine twenty-two, and two audit letters.
Oh, I'm sorry. As you know, we're, we're round, we're nearing the end of our audit process for last fiscal year. On January twenty-third, they sent me, well, actually, it was after January twenty-third, but they sent me letters that required signatures. We have them on the agenda to come next month, Representatives of Tuscan and Company, to present the audit report. So I'm asking the board to sign the letters that they have sent, which I provided to you twice already. One is a representation letter. The other one is saying that we are compliance with Section 218. We supplied them with a full list of all of our accounts. We confirmed all our funds. We confirmed all our financial institutions. There's no irregular, irregularities, illegal acts made, there's no fraud. We made available to them all the information relevant, and we have faithfully, truthfully responded to any inquiry.
Will you give the chair mages?
There's three. This third one is the review of the financial statement draft, which is also provided to you. And based on that, you see no changes. The only thing I would suggest is, I'm gonna call Lisa. On the M D A short thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
They said that the, the loan paid off in fiscal year 2022 is actually paid off in fiscal year 2021, so I'm gonna make, have her make that correction. Okay. Did you all have any other issues that you saw?
And the one, the one letter to, to Tuscan that has the long, long list of all the items. The six-page letter. What's really important is to note that it says at the beginning, "We confirm to the best of our knowledge and belief." And so, you're not saying that all the statements are absolutely true in all cases, but-
If it didn't, then they say that it wouldn't have signed it.
Yes, sir. I would not have let you sign it.
All right, so they had no, there were no management comments, new ones for this past fiscal year. For the prior year, they, they did have two comments. We resolved one of those issues tonight with the adoption of the resolution on the fund's balance. And we adopt, we have resolved the other one, which had to do with the policies and procedures in our prior meeting. So upon completion of that, I don't know that they have not asked for a copy of it, but our response will be that we have adopted a comprehensive policy and procedures. And then the other one will be that we have adopted the resolution. So I will send that management response on behalf of the board to Tuscan and Company, which will then be made part of the final audit report. Okay? Now, we don't need any motions, do we?
No, ma'am.
For the, for the general population, as soon as we have the final report, it will be uploaded to the website.
It will not be after, it will not be until after-
Until after next month's meeting, and we have a final copy. Okay. Approved the minutes?
Approval of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting, monthly meeting minutes.
I approve.
I approve.
Mike? Caris?
Okay.
Okay. Approval of the January twenty twenty-three bank statements and financial reports and February twenty twenty-three bills and financial reports.
You usually get three motions.
A second.
I need a first.
You had to make the first.
You made it first.
I thought you were reading it. So approve the January twenty twenty-three bank statements and financial reports, and February twenty twenty-three bills and financial reports.
And a second.
Aye. Motion carries.
And February.
Public input.
In February.
They were both. We all, pardon? We actually already did public input. But it's on the list down here, so, okay. Supervisor discussion. You guys done?
Done. Done.
Mike? Make a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.
Thank you, Bill.
Here's our, here's our first and second on it?
I'm the first.
Ron's the second. And the time is?
Eight forty-one. Sorry.
Recording stop. Recording.